Good evening, everyone. The meeting of the Hingham School Committee is called to order. It is 6:31. It is August 18th, 2025. Just to start, this meeting is being held remotely or in person as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone besides Harbor Media recording this meeting? No one? I don't see anyone online. Tonight, I am joined by my colleagues on Zoom tonight. Remotely, we have Carrie Nie, we have Matt Cosman, Tim Miller Dempsey, Ally Anderson, Michelle Eyre, and John Mooney will be joining us shortly. So we will start with our first order, our second order of business per se is approval of minutes that were held on July 21st, 2025.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st, 2025 School Committee Meeting.
I will second.
Okay. All right, we will be doing roll call votes tonight because we have a member remotely. So I will start with Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, minutes are approved. We will move on to questions and comments. This is a portion of the meeting that we have set aside to take questions and comments on items that are unrelated to items on our agenda. If there is anyone in the audience or online with a question or comment, if so, please raise your hand now, and I'll be happy to recognize you. I do not see anyone online. And we have a big audience here tonight. All right, we're moving right along on to the Superintendent's Report, item four.
Terrific. Terrific, thank you, Jen. So August is flying by, which means that we'll soon be welcoming our administrators, staff, and students back on campus. So this week, we will have members of our full leadership team here to do some trainings and some beginning of year planning. Next week, we welcome back our new educators on Monday, and then we welcome back the full faculty on Wednesday, August 27th. In the following week, we look forward to seeing our halls abuzz with students as we begin the new year. I'd ask the school committee and members of our community to please save the date for the much awaited Foster School official ribbon cutting, and that will be held on Monday, September 15th. So we're looking forward to celebrating this milestone and also to celebrate the hard work of so many community members who have just dedicated hours to this project. And we finally got it across the finish line and really looking forward to showcasing this beautiful learning space with the community. And just a reminder to the school committee that we will have our scissors handy for two ribbon cuttings. Reminder of the previously announced dock, the high school dock facility, the Wellness Center, that ribbon cutting has been scheduled for Friday, September 12th. So much to celebrate.
What time?
That is, the dock is at 3 o'clock, and the foster ribbon cutting will be at 4 o'clock. So last week, we enjoyed seeing several of our high school jazz band students here at Town Hall. They were dedicating their time and volunteering to put on a concert for our seniors at the Hingham Center for Active Living. And so they serenaded the seniors with well-known jazz standards. And the participants were particularly impressed not only by the skill of our musicians, but just, again, their willingness during the summer to dedicate those hours and volunteer. And so I want to give a special thank you to HHS alum Nathan Kessler, who helped organize the event and did a really terrific job of leading that. So tomorrow evening, Erika Pollard, Amy Jackson, and I will be heading into the Croc Center in Boston, joining our Metco district peers from across the state in welcoming families at the annual Metco Back to School Ice Cream Social. So we're looking forward to connecting with some of our new students, returning families, as we prepare for the launch of school. And last but not least, I would like to say a special thank you to our HR department, who led two very productive hiring fairs. So last Thursday, August 14th, we welcomed several prospective staff members at our own HPS hiring fair, had a strong turnout for the event, and had many candidates for some of our open power educator positions, after-school kids and action staff, and substitutes for a variety of positions ranging from maintenance to bus drivers to food service workers and so on. Also want to thank Marion Foley for representing us at the Mass Core Hiring Fair in Quincy that was earlier in the week, and we had similar yields there. So both events well-attended and very worthwhile.
Absolutely, thank you very much. That's great. I'm very excited for the, both the dock grand opening and for the foster ribbon cutting. So that'll be, that's great that we got that scheduled. Okay, so moving on to communications. Communications, you're speaking by Superintendent. We will pass over student communications. Our student should be joining us in the fall. And then, is anyone on the committee for other communications? Carrie, do you have anything? Okay. I do not have anything. So we will move on to item six, which is new business, and we will start off with 6.1, which is to receive a strategic planning graphic update.
Terrific, and I believe Sheri was going to share that for us on the screen. So this evening, we are presenting the polished version of the strategic plan content that we had previously presented to the school committee. Because we had done a fairly thorough presentation, I won't repeat all of the content, but did want to share this beautiful graphic that was really tied together the big themes of our strategic plan, and I think just nicely showcased our direction and where we're headed. And so the strategic plan graphic that you see includes a letter of introduction that outlines our process, gives a particularly warm thank you to our strategic plan committee members. And so I'll let Sheri scroll through those first couple of pages. Again, some really beautiful graphic design here. There we are.
There we go.
So again, just talking through the sections of the strategic plan. Again, a huge thank you to the community members who participated, and not just the committee, but all members of our community had an opportunity to participate in the strategic planning process, whether that was through participating in a survey, in a focus group. And we had voices ranging from students to staff to administrators and to a variety of community members. Again, this slide here is probably one of the most important, and that is an opportunity to thank the more than a couple of dozen community members who participated on the committee, had some really robust discussion, and I do think represented our community well. And so in this strategic plan, we did tweak, not fully write anew, but we certainly tweaked and updated our mission statement, our vision statement, and our core values. And as I shared when I previously presented the content of the plan to the school committee earlier this summer, I mentioned that we tied the core values to the other document we had presented last year, which was our Portrait of a Learner. And so you'll see that the two documents really do talk to each other and together create a whole. Our theory of action kind of foreshadows where we hope to be at the end of the strategic plan in three years, once we have completed the strategic initiatives. This just gives an overview of the process, talking through from the earliest days of data gathering through that process of focus group data, meeting with our committee, the iterative process between the committee and the leadership team, and the final stages of implementing the plan is where we're headed next. We can move to the next slide. As so, as previously shared, and very similar to our last strategic plan, we have five main spokes of our strategic plan. The first is a perennial area of focus, which is to develop a culture of collaboration and community partnerships. So this really centers around communication and including all the voices in our community. The second spoke relates to innovative and responsive teaching and learning, and so this features a number of the initiatives that we have been sharing with the school committee throughout the past year, related to MTSS, related to some of our innovative math instruction, related to some of the improvements that we're making in special education. Healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities centers some of the social-emotional learning and behavioral wellness of our students and our staff. Capital finance will continue to be a perennial goal, and we will be continuing to partner with the town on our capital and finance goals. And then finally, we have, particularly over the course of the last year, really focused in on bolstering some of our HR processes and looking to bolster our leadership development. And so, given that I did previously share this in depth with the committee previously, I'll just give a high-level overview of the objectives, but won't go into each of the associated initiatives. So under the spoke of culture of collaboration and community partnerships, we're continuing to refine the district-wide communication strategies to consistently engage all families and stakeholders. Under innovative and responsive teaching and learning, we'll be continuing to design and implement engaging and relevant learning experiences that support every child in meeting their educational needs. So that would include initiatives such as our Portrait of a Learner, implementing our math programs and other initiatives. Under healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities, we're fostering and sustaining a healthy, equitable, and inclusive educational environment for every student and staff member, and have a number of associated SEL initiatives to promote social-emotional well-being. Under capital and finance, we'll continue to refine and implement the district's five-year capital and operational master plan and effectively allocate resources to meet the needs of students. And then finally, again, under HR and leadership, that has been kind of a recent area of focus, and looking to continue to attract, retain, and support professional, high-caliber, diverse staff throughout the district. And shout out to Carrie Nie, who always makes sure that I spell out the acronyms that we use in education. So that was included in the document. And finally, this dashboard page is one that we will be printing and posting in various places around the district. It provides a high-level summary of our mission, vision, core values, and those strategic areas of focus. So thank you to Erika Pollard for taking the lead on printing not only this, but also our Portrait of a Learner posters will be featured prominently in classrooms and school spaces throughout the district.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the committee that has some questions?
Beautiful job.
Thank you. Now the work begins.
And for anyone who's listening, if you go back to, I believe it was our June 20th meeting, where we went into more in-depth about the strategic plan. So thank you for that update on the graphic. All right, so we will move on to 6.2, which is to discuss updates to handbooks and act as appropriate. And we are, and I just changed it up a little bit tonight, that we're gonna do more like a first read of the handbooks tonight, kind of like what we do with policy. And I'll let Katie explain.
Yes. So very grateful to the work of our principals, who proposed some initial changes to the handbook that we did share with our policy subcommittee. I mentioned to the policy subcommittee at that time that there were two very important sets of eyes that we wanted to have on the suggested changes. One is our new legal counsel, and so we did have our attorneys review the handbook. And the second is our new nurse manager has been working with our nurses, and there were a few health updates as well. And so the lateness of the items in your packet were due to those two factors. And so do want to talk through some of the proposed revisions, and I will highlight, in particular, some of the health-related items that were proposed by our nurses and new nurse manager, and some of the language proposed by our new legal counsel. And as I mentioned, our principals had been working with school councils and working with their building administration teams to work on some of the other revisions. We've had a lot of eyes on the document. I think this is probably the deepest dive we've taken into our handbooks in a while, and so will talk us through some of the high-level points and happy to answer any other questions. Again, I know that the committee did not have much time to review this in advance of the meeting tonight. So hope that we could actually, I usually start with elementary and work our way up to high school, but hope tonight we could go in reverse, because the high school handbook had a number of changes. So in addition to updating our mission and core values to align to our new strategic plan, and taking care of updates to some of the names, one of the most important changes in the handbook relates to the new regulations around graduation and promotion requirements. So we will no longer use MCAS as one of our competency determinations for graduation. And we are, as every district is across the state, in the process of developing our competency determinations with regard to showing of mastery. And so therefore, Erika Pollard came up with some language that will cover the state that we are currently in, which is that all students must also obtain a competency determination as determined by school committee policy. And so our leadership team will be working with the policy subcommittee and then seeking the approval of the full committee as to the methods that we'll be using to demonstrate mastery in lieu of MCAS.
And that will be spelled out before January, right?
Correct. So initially, that information was due to DESI by October 30th. They did extend that deadline until December 30th. I do think we will be more in that October range, for sure. We've already been having conversations about it, but given that our educators have not been around this summer, we wanted to make sure that we were getting full input.
Just saying that so parents of seniors aren't nervous.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, yeah, we will absolutely keep the school committee in the loop on our conversations, and we'll be on the earlier side of that deadline, for sure.
Yeah, and MAS did last week put out a sample policy for competency determination, too, so we have that to work with.
Terrific.
Right after our policy.
Right after. All right, the next section are a number of updates that were, again, collaborated on by our nurses and by our new nurse manager. So under updating health services, we will suggest that we remove faculty and staff from one of the sentences related to the role of a high school nurse. Their license covers their interactions with students, not administering medicine and so on to our staff. And so they will certainly be, continue to be available to staff on an emergency basis, but for example, would not be involved in the administration of medication to our staff. With regard to illness and injury in school, removing language around the student, once they leave school, they are in the care of the parent. Making some updates of websites and current fact sheets from the state of Massachusetts with regard to communicable illnesses, so that's more of a housekeeping item in updating that, and replacing language, the current best practice is communicable rather than contagious. So updating and refreshing some of that language.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
Just under the illness injury, where it says, removing the student will call, I understand that part, but is there language in there about them being under the care of a parent and they have to? We changed the policy on this a couple, a couple of years ago, adding in some language for the request, I think it was the high school principal at the time.
Yes.
Due to, I think there was an issue with students leaving and then coming back, or going, having an appointment, leaving. And then coming back.
So.
Doing a virtual appointment.
So I will make note of that. So again, we have our full leadership team back this week, and so I can make note of that, cross-reference the policy, and can make any associated updates.
Thank you. It was just something I recall being brought to us to change in the policy, so.
Terrific.
I think it was two years ago we changed it.
Okay. Erica and I will take a look at that language. No, that's great. No, please.
Otherwise, I forget.
That's absolutely. Again, there's some additional updates of outdated websites, eliminating that. With regard to immunizations, we just updated some of the new websites that are being used and making sure that the immunization language is up to date. With regard to medication at school, there were some language changes suggested that we're making it more precise. With regard to the physician's orders versus a pharmacy-labeled container, a pharmacy-labeled container can serve in lieu of a physician's order. If the nurse has a question, they can request the licensed provider's order. An important update with regard to self-carrying, the state has added prescription enzyme supplements to the previous list, which included EpiPens, diabetic products, and so on. With regard to allergies, we made some suggested tweaks to the language based on advice of our council, and of removing students with life-threatening allergies and instead making it clear that any student with any allergy, we should be communicating with. There was some suggested language from our nurses and nurse manager, rephrasing some of the language around individual healthcare plans and rephrasing it to be a student-specific care plan. The next several items are more administrative, administrivia. With regard to study halls, the attendance policy with regard to when colleges come to campus, making sure that students understand that they should not miss more than three scheduled academic classes for that purpose. Updates to our absence from school procedure with regard to the automated phone call that's received from the school. Our attorney looked at our discipline procedures and requested that we remove the section, discipline of students with disabilities, and remove the section on exclusion from class. With regard to the physical restraint policy, removing prone restraint from that language. We did update the bus fee in the handbook. Our attorney requested that we make updates to the language around lockers and valuables, eliminating any item may be seized during the course of a search. Updated our parking language with regard to some of the changes to the fees. With regard to tardiness to school, changed the time from 8:10 to 8 o'clock and removed the word tardy and replacing it with main office. With regard to alcohol and drugs, there was some clarifying language with regard to what was formerly known as group possession, which is a phrase that is somewhat out of vogue, to be replaced with knowingly be in the presence of. Eliminating the only exception to this rule by a doctor prescription. The attorney suggested where athletics thoroughly covers athletic participation, keeping the language consistent in that section rather than having it in two places. We added our new AI policy to the handbook, did some record-keeping with regard to staff that are in charge of different civil rights responsibilities. This point here, both in our equity audit and our attorney, the feedback was given that it's unusual to include a full memorandum of understanding with the HPD in a handbook that generally isn't considered a best practice. There are a couple of districts around that still do that, but most, at most include a link to it or include reference to it, but it's unusual to have the full MOU listed in the handbook. Updated our civil rights contact people. And this next section here is one that we had previously discussed in our policy subcommittee. As we know, there was new regulations with regard to curriculum and family rights with regard to curriculum. And so we added language that was suggested by MASs and MASc with regard to curriculum. We updated our athletic user fees. And then under the student eligibility section around chemical health, again, updating that language around possession instead of group possession, use the phrase knowingly be in the presence of. Dr. Bucky made a few tweaks to the language around first violation, second violation with regard to chemical health, and some clarification around when students do seek substance abuse treatment.
Sorry, just on the chemical standards, just these are consistent with MIAA and Patriot League.
Yes, they are, yes. And so we did cross-reference MIAA and Patriot League, and also did a comparison of area districts as well.
Before we go to questions, I will say thank this is a lot, so I appreciate us having a couple of extra weeks to kind of just go through it, reread it. Because I think especially related to policy, I just want to make sure that everything is aligning with our policies, and if we have to update anything in our policies with change in the law, but Ally's been pretty good with, actually Ally's been excellent with keeping us up to date with the law changes and bringing it to the policy subcommittee. But I think it'd just be important to kind of go through all of these changes and make sure that everything aligns with our current policies. And I know that a lot of it is procedure, which is making sure they align.
Absolutely.
And with that, I will open up to the committee for questions.
And right now?
Carrie, do you have anything?
No, not right now, thank you.
All right. So I think we will essentially go over this again. We might have to schedule another meeting at the end of August. We might have to schedule another meeting at the end of August via Zoom to update these. We have a couple of other things we have to go over because I don't think we want to wait until September thirteenth.
Yes.
Fifteenth, September fifteenth, ready to go. We want them ready to go. We will coordinate that. Get it on. All right.
Great. So the next up, we'll work backwards, is the middle school. And so in addition to some of the substantive changes that I mentioned with regard to the high school that would carry over to the middle school, there were more smaller tweaks to language, clarifying that chronic tardiness would be absences of five days or more. Clarifying some of just the procedural pieces around students being tardy. Our attorney suggested that all bike riders under the age of sixteen must wear helmets. We previously had fifteen, so thank you to Colby for that correction. With regard to cell phone equipment, we do still have away all day at the middle school. Just have some language around consequences for that violation. Updated our academic integrity language to be inclusive of some of the language that we have with regard to AI. There was an update with regard to student records indicating that eligible students aged fourteen or older or ninth grade or higher may examine their own records with prior notice. Some slight tweak to the locker language. Updated the sexual harassment policy to align with the HPS school committee policy.
I have a question on the cell phones. Just the language where it says, including but not limited to Apple Watches. I would ask you maybe consider it to changing it to smart watches.
That is a good suggestion.
Can I ask a question on the cellphone one?
Sure.
I guess I'm, how prevalent is locker use in the middle school?
Much more so than high school. So I do think that students at the middle school know where their locker is, they do use it. The high school, much less so.
Yeah. I guess, I mean, I'm not looking to change the policy at all or whatever, the handbook. Like, do we actually think that every single, so basically, you know, this handbook is saying that every student cannot have a cell phone in their, you know, in their pocket, in their bag. I just, I don't know if that's actually what's really happening. I'm not suggesting that we, I prefer it to be in the locker room, but if it's not, if even if seventy-five percent of the kids are using their lockers, but twenty-five percent are, I'd be surprised if those twenty-five percent don't have cell phones of them. So again, I don't know. I mean, it's fine to have it as is, but it's very specific that cell phone needs to be in the locker. And I don't know.
And so again, the policy is away all day. And so the middle school has, so in terms of the middle school, that's the language they use when, every morning on the announcements, Mr. Smith does remind students that cellphones are not to be visible and there is a concerted effort to try to enforce that. So as long as, yeah, they are not, not visible.
Which is good. I guess that's what I'm wondering is like, why are we specifying it needs to be in the locker if that's, is that actually what we're really driving for? I mean, I know it would be better because then they don't have the risk of pulling it out, but if, if that's not, if Mr. Smith is saying put it in your locker every day, okay, then I can buy that. If he's not and it's sort of the practices, expectation is you're not on it.
Sure.
Just my cell phones.
Yeah.
Notifications are coming up. Then I guess I would just think about, do we, do we actually want that in the handbook if it's not what we're really practicing?
It is the goal.
Yeah.
I would say, I would say that it's the goal. So we all know as adults too, even having it in the vicinity is just entirely too tempting. And so the locker is very much the goal.
Okay. It may give teachers more leeway to, if the policy is out of sight and they pull it out in class and they say, sorry, you broke the policy, put it out of sight as opposed to now you have to go put it in your locker. I'm just thinking it gives more of a fallback place for the teachers to enforce the rule.
To say, put it in the locker.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, honestly, N of two with kids at middle school, I don't think either of mine used lock, lockers, so they probably broke this policy, but like, again, it wasn't, one of them wasn't even there when this was there. So it may just be my kids that weren't using their locker. But like, they were, I mean, honestly, it was more of a, I don't think I have time to get from class A to B and the lockers and, you know, to get my books and change it was the reason, had nothing to do with the cell phone situation. So, but maybe just them.
Great. And this is year two that they're?
Yes, yes. Of kind of that consistent.
Yeah. And again, to be clear, I am fully in support of not using, you know, not having the cellphones on. Yeah. I just, I'm trying to make sure what we're actually putting in the handbook is what is practical.
We are on.
Academic integrity.
Yes, I think we did academic integrity and just updated that with the AI language. Updated the sexual harassment policy to align to our HPS policy. With regard to student behavior, our attorney suggested a few tweaks to our short-term suspension language, including considering ways to reengage the student in the learning process and seeking remedies besides an out-school suspension. With regard to long-term suspension, our attorney made some suggestions that are not clearly highlighted in this memo.
So the red is the current?
The red is, I don't know that the correct highlighting transferred for this, so I will provide a clarification to the school committee on the long-term suspension. Our attorney suggested removing expedited evaluation process. And I'm sorry, so, so if you will note down further, she suggested removing the previous long-term suspension language and instead suggested entirely new language. So the red crosshatched language is what was to be removed and replaced by the non-crosshatched red language for a long-term suspension.
Ellie, will you double-check that with the policy JIC?
Yes, thank you.
If you don't mind.
She suggested some updates to due process for students with disability to align with mass general law. Suggested alternative language for the expedited evaluation process. Under bullying and harassment, suggested that we update bullying to be defined as repeated use by one or more staff or students and clarify that the target though can only be a student but under the definition, MGL definition of bullying.
Different word of target in our policy.
We do, yeah, we use.
Use a different word.
No, we use target, not victim. Yep, target is the more updated, updated word.
Yes, I remembered the word being changed.
Yes.
No, I'm good.
There were some minor changes under physical restraint policy. And similar to what we did at the high school, we have the new civil rights language with regard to curriculum, using that MAFS, MASC language. And then finally, we updated the bus fee language.
I think Ellie and I have a date in our near future.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions on the middle school handbook changes?
Take a look and try to cross them. Everything's consistent.
This cover letter that came with this, I guess, does this go with, do all the schools use this? Because I do appreciate this language if you need this book translated.
That's an excellent question.
I'm not sure that they all.
I'm not sure that they all do. And so that's, that's a great suggestion.
We can do that.
Okay.
Got a running list of changes.
Any other questions for middle school? I think Carrie has a question. Go ahead, Carrie.
Yeah, I just, one, in the high school, you included the portrait of a learner at the top. I'm wondering if we might consider doing that for all of the handbooks.
I think it's a great suggestion, yeah.
Great.
Got it on my list.
All right.
It's a great suggestion.
Elementary. So for elementary, much like middle school and high school, we will include that new language related to curriculum recommended by MAS S, MASC. Updated staff related to several rights reporting, just updated names and roles. There was some slight tweaks with regard to student discipline. Bullying harassment, that's similar update of language to include the definition of bullying being staff or students directed at a student target. Similar to the middle school language under short-term suspension, including the language around re-engaging the student in the learning environment after the short-term suspension. The long-term suspension language was moved up to be closer to the short-term suspension. Echoes some of the similar language around re-engaging the student in the learning process after the suspension, consideration of alternatives to suspension. Some slight tweaks to language with regard to forty-five school days rather than forty-five days with regard to due process for students with disabilities and including serious bodily injury, injury in addition to dangerous weapons or drugs being cause for alternative educational placement. And then under sexual harassment, including language around stalking, domestic violence, and dating violence. And with regard to requests for the student cumulative record, the timeline standard for that is as soon as practicable but no later than ten days. And then finally, under the special education section, our attorney suggested adding a sentence. If parents wish, they can request a special education or section 504 evaluation.
Does anyone, can you have any questions? Elementary. So you also have reading, more reading to do over the next couple of weeks and you and Ellie will probably.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Jen, given the early morning that Matt and you had, would it be possible to move up his presentation in the order?
Everyone in the committee okay with that?
Yep. All right. You'll be.
He has a, at least a six AM start time, so.
Move that up.
Sure we. And it is the busiest week of the year for the director of facilities preparing buildings for our students to return. This is a little bit like asking an accountant to give a presentation during tax season while they're at the height of their busyness, but we have so many projects going on that I knew the committee would appreciate an update from Matt on where we are at with a number of projects. And with that, I'll let Matt take it away.
Moving up six point eight.
Isn't that great?
Great. Hi, everybody. My name's Matthew Mann, Director of Facilities. Very happy to be here. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I just noticed I put the old picture of Foster up. Isn't that awesome?
You missed it already.
Yep.
Bear with us, just some technical difficulties.
Yeah.
Some technical difficulties.
I think if you click off presenter view.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
So tonight, I'm going to talk about each school individually and the projects that are going on in each school and the challenges that we have and an update as well. Just our team, the director, Ryan Sanford, custodial manager and facilities manager. Jolene is the events coordinator and she also does our finance. An amazing custodial team working hard all summer and our amazing maintenance team as well, six people working hard all summer as well. Our partners, we could, really could not do this without them. The left-hand side is our regular partners stemming from mechanical to electrical, two things you don't even consider like fire extinguishers. They're awesome. The right-hand side is our project teams across the district. They're all doing very good work. So let's talk about the high school. Actually, this should be one hundred percent. Matt Conway has been working very hard. He wanted to get everything done ahead of time and he's accomplished that. We took a tour of the building today. It is at one hundred percent readiness. When the teachers come back, they'll ask for things to be moved around. He'll take care of that as well. Just some things that happened over the summer. Everything's clean. We are having professional cleaning done this week. That's been slated for months and all the PMs on HVAC are completed as well. Projects, the dock is ninety-nine percent, so substantially complete. We have minor punchless items, the floor's going in and we have to give the phone number to the fire alarm company. Outside of that, it's just minor work and it's an amazing building. I can't wait until you see it. Mullen was great with our GC and everybody else. Special shout out to Socotech for managing the project and of course, of course, HSP for really funding the entire thing. The field, we had a meeting this morning at eight AM. It is moving along very well. Rad Sports, R A D Sports is really pushing forward. They're not going to stop for a single day until the twenty-eighth. And I think we all walked away this morning with, it's going to be open on the twenty-eighth. That's when our first event is. So we're very confident in that as well. Our HEF-funded thinking classrooms for the math department, amazing work. I really have to have a shout out to Pete LaFavre and Sean O'Hare. They really pushed it when I said we have to get this done ahead of the summer so everything can be set up. can be set up. They really pushed it, worked overtime, and got it done within three weeks. Amazing job. Also, shout out to the crews, the custodial crews, for assembling all the furniture and placing them. And of course, Dave Jewett for imagining this whole project. We are going to be renovating the auditorium. It is in great need of not only sound, but lighting and rigging itself. Ayesha is very talented with finding the funding that we needed for that, so that is moving through. That will take place without anybody knowing. It will take place during school breaks, on weekends, and that will happen throughout the school year. We had a safety and security upgrade. Nobody really saw it. We worked through the school year. We added 11 cameras, a new FOB system, and a fire door overhaul. So safety and security is upgraded. The cameras are located throughout the building, and they were done internally. We decided to purchase the cameras and have our maintenance staff install them, and our technology team upload them to the computers. So it saved the district a lot of money. The challenges, the roof, of course, still leaking. We have Gibson Roofing, who is very helpful. They are very responsive and come out immediately after storms. Our mechanical systems are beginning to start to fail. Our chiller is only running at about 60%, 75%. I made the decision to hold off on any major repairs because that would cost probably $100,000 because it's still working. So we're monitoring that carefully. I had our mechanical contractors come in, take a look at it. They said it will hold, and they did a lot of preventative maintenance on it. And we're looking at the envelope, too. There's a lot of windows that need upgrading. We're working on that as well. The middle schools, 90%. Probably after today, it's 95. They are going to be done this week. An amazing team down there. Again, professional cleaning's going on with Kennedy Carpets and Restoration. Somebody backed into a ramp there, where we repaired it internally and using a vendor. And we have preventative maintenance going on with all of the rooftop units as well. So that will be 100% probably by the end of this week. We did overhaul the, what they call distance learning lecture hall. The lighting in there was very poor, so we upgraded all the lighting. And we still have to work on some electrical panel work to bring the school back up to par and meet today's needs. So we're ongoing with that work as well. The chiller went down to 50% this summer. It was difficult because we have summer school there. Our vendor really worked hard to try to find the parts, and it got back up and running, and he said it should be fine for the rest of the year. The lighting system in the parking lot needs an upgrade. We are working through that with our vendor as well. And we're starting some sidewalk repairs. Anybody who walks on the sidewalks there knows that they're very uneven. I have a contractor that's coming in, and it's going to smooth everything out. East Elementary, we're about 90%. The second and first floor are, I should say, the bottom floor are pretty much all done. There's only one wing. That's where the summer school was. That they're cleaning up now. All the rugs and carpets were professionally cleaned. We do have some significant challenges there this summer. The rooftop units had to be overhauled, as well as the chiller. And the B M S system, we are working on currently. That is the communication between all of the mechanical systems, talking to each other, reading all the sensors in the room, and adjusting itself. I think we need a little bit of an overhaul there. I already have somebody who's in the background now working on it. There's a lot of condensation leaks. That's not the roof leaking. That's the actual unit in the room. Warm moisture comes in, it condensation forms, and it drips on the floor. So we're trying to really work on that as well. My thought is, we repaired the chiller. Now, super cold water's going to there, and it's condensing in the classroom or the office. The Foster Elementary School, I didn't use the old picture. This is a common, this is the new picture. We're probably at 75%. You have to remember that this school does not need to be waxed. The furniture does not need to be pulled out. All they need to do is go in and clean the classroom, tabletops, countertops, lights, et cetera. So we have a team that's been there about a week now. They have two more weeks. We will be 100% by the end of next week. We do have the main floor being professionally cleaned. That's that. Beautiful rock floor on the bottom. There's some spots from construction. We want to make sure it's up and ready for the school year. Here's a project update. We just had this meeting this past Thursday. The paving is going on. If you ever drove by that school, not only the road, but the parking lots, everything's going on up there. There's some drainage work. The solar array is being built this week. It should be ready by the end of this week or early next week. The play areas are being finished. The wellhead is being drilled. We have to get approval to place it on the field in a different location. The overall landscaping's going to be checked by our landscape architect. The softball field's going to start being built after the parking lots, so our teachers have someplace to park and get into the school. The basketball courts will be going in, and the interior punch list is almost complete. So it's a very good push towards the end of the year. P R S is at 90%. I say that because the two main hallways, one of them's done, the other one needs to be done. So that's a critical time. Those hallways, as everybody knows, are pretty long. All the rooms are cleaned, and we have a professional team coming in to do the rugs. The PMs are all complete. The project update there, we did abate two rooms. Finally, the principal's office in a conference room. We had a lot of tree removal this year. As everybody remembers, a tree fell on the school, so I asked an arborist to come in, and I identify probably 15 trees that needed to come down, and we've been working on that. That is complete. The HVAC has been PMed, and we are placing all the water heaters in the school. Some of them are dated 1999, so that's a pretty good water heater. We're monitoring the roof. The HVAC unit ventilators are being upgraded as needed. In our electrical use, we're trying to get that down by replacing all the lights with LED. South School was ready last week. That team is amazing, and the reason why is because we have a lot of construction going on there. The rugs, Arthur and his team decided to start doing them on their own. They can't wait for the professional team to come in, so they just started doing it on their own. And all the PMs are completed by his team. He's an amazing lead custodian. Thank you, Arthur. The projects that are going, sorry, the challenges that are going in there, we're monitoring the roof. The HVAC and boiler, the boiler system's going to be overhauled in September, and we have a team coming in to do some maintenance. The building envelope, we've been monitoring, but we've been fixing up some bricks on the outside, and we're replacing a pretty major pothole at the entrance of the school. That will happen over the next week. The depot, we are clearing up and cleaning out. So this is that bus depot, the big white building, the old military building. These are photos from when I first came in. These are probably from October or so. It really scared me. I didn't like it. This is where we are now. We are at a place where we are operationally efficient. Cleaned out the building thanks to used surplusing materials, and now we have places like this. This is K I A storage. They have places to put their stuff that's organized. We know where it is. And our equipment that's coming in is organized, and it's based on operational use. Winter equipment has one bay, summer equipment has another, and we know where everything is. We also started organizing pallets for flood control. So if we have a flood, put a pallet on a truck, and we're off and going, not scattering around trying to gather things from the district. So we're really trying to organize everything into a logistics system. One slide that didn't show up on there was south. We did place a large R T U on the roof.
Giant crane.
A giant crane, and it was tilted way down, which made me nervous, but they did an amazing job. They started at about 7:00 AM. They finished at about 1:00, and there was no issues whatsoever. So that's taking all the old materials off and placing the new ones on. I was in contact with Nick Alberti the whole time. He said, we are good to go. So now they're working on connecting that system to the school. So we are in a very good place at south.
Do you want to update on the roof?
The roof, so we had MSBA come in, and they, as you know, we wrote three SOIs, statements of interest, to engage with MSBA and ask them for help in recovering costs for the roofs at south, P R S in the high school, and at the high school to replace the boilers in all the rooftop units with heat pumps. And they have some pretty strict stipulations. They said, we'll help you with your boiler, but you can't replace a boiler with a boiler. You have to go with heat pumps. The only thing I can say is heat pumps are much like Foster. Foster has a geothermal system, but they have water furnaces. Those are similar to heat pumps. So it's an all-electric system. They're trying to reduce all of that pollution going into the air. Those walkthroughs took place last week at each one of the schools, and they went very, very well. When they saw, the high school especially, they really were like, yep, we understand what's happening here. I showed them the boiler room. I showed them the repairs that we did. All you had to do was look up on the second floor and see all the water damage that's going on there. It was very clear. So we have to wait until mid-October or so and get the next level. So we were accepted into the MSBA's statement of interest. Now they have their verification. The next step is to be accepted into the pipeline, and that's what's next. And it looks pretty positive. So we're excited about the next phase of the MSBA. So the roofs at South Elementary School and P R S, P R S is probably the worst, and the high school are going to remain the same, if not get worse. So you are going to hear that there's water coming in. My teams will respond to the flooding that's going on. We will call on our contractors to correct a localized problem. Once we correct it in one place, it will happen in another. It's a failed system, so it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing. So it's important to remember that we have to be patient, and we have applied for significant aid for the MSBA to help us out, and that's, we are accepted into that pipeline, and it looks very positive.
I'll ask a question about the pothole at south. Is that the pothole at drop-off?
It is not, the pothole at drop-off. That's next. That's not our property. We discovered quite some time ago that that's actually the town or fire department's property.
Right on the line, which is why I was curious if you were fixing.
Yes. If you drive up the main drive on the right-hand side, you'll see what I call alligator cracking. That's a technical term, but it's cracking. And one significant area is exposed to the actual ground below, so that's complete failure. If you don't fix it, by the time winter comes around, it will be the size of the entire driveway, so we have to do something about it pretty quick. Hannibal Brothers Paving Company, who's a common contractor in town, D P W uses them all the time. They're actually doing work up at Foster, came out and looked at it, and they said, okay, we can, this is what we can do. You need to kind of do a full patch, or it's going to get much worse. You can't just patch it. Your plow will rip it right out, so you have to patch the entire front way. I also asked them to look at the other area to see if there's anything we can do. I had actually two contractors come out, and they said it's a drainage issue. It is not a paving issue. So if we pave that, we'll simply move the water towards the school, and it will happen at the top of the driveway. It's very, it's very flat up there. The only thing we can do is put in a catch basin that drains the water at the bottom, and that's very costly. And it's not our property, so we're not even allowed to do that. So it's a, it's a conversation for the town to kind of engage in, what are we going to do moving forward? The sidewalk up there is very small as well.
And the roots from the trees kind of lifted up there. I just want to emphasize if we could just continue to have that conversation with the town and work together at some point, get that remedied, because I know there have been temporary patches, and I know that they continues to be failing. That makes sense, but it's a drainage issue.
Yes. It's a level issue, and the water has no place to go but there. So we're working on it.
Does anyone else on the committee have any questions?
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Very busy, very, very busy.
Yeah, I love my work. Thank you.
It shows. Just make sure there's no one online. I couldn't see the Zoom earlier, so. Carrie, is anyone, no hands raised? So that is great. Thank you, Matt, very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. See you bright and early tomorrow.
Go get some sleep.
Yes. All right. So we will move back to 6.3, which is to receive an update on the status of Title I, II, and IV funding.
This is probably some of the most exciting news of the evening. So as you recall, last spring, we were very nervous about the state of ESF funding, and very grateful that we got word that we did, in fact, receive the Title II, Title I, II, and IV funding. And I'll let Erica Pollard take that one from here.
Yeah. As Katie mentioned, we were, I was hesitant to plan a lot of professional development before knowing whether we would receive these funds, but the grant amounts actually were very similar to what we have received last year. Title I specifically is meant to close achievement gaps, particularly for low-income students, and we'll be receiving $79,350 in Title I funding. In line with our plan last year, we intend to use the bulk of those funds to fund a math interventionist who will work with students at the high school. We do have to provide eligible children in private elementary and secondary schools with Title I services if they qualify, and we only have one school that has, up until now at least, requested access to Title I funds, and that's the New England Hebrew Academy. They'll receive a portion of the funds that are allocated to Hingham for use with low-income students in their school. Title II is money that we will primarily use for professional development. The goals of the Title II program are to increase student achievement, improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders, increase the number of teachers, principals, and school leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement, and providing low-income and minority students with greater access to effective teachers, principals, and school leaders. We'll be receiving $44,435 in Title II funding. Similar to Title I, we are required to provide equitable access funds to Title II private schools that are within Hingham. They have until September to request a share of the pro-share funding, which is why I don't have an exact number, but the number is determined by their enrollment numbers if they request to participate in our Title II program. Finally, Title IV is intended to support well-rounded educational opportunities, support safe and healthy students, and support effective use of technology. We will be receiving $10,000 in Title IV funding, which will be used to fund professional development, mostly focused on the effective use of technology. Private schools in Hingham, as with Title II, have the option to request a share of their funding at an amount that's determined by their enrollment numbers, and I should have those numbers soon.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
Thank you, Erica.
So this is now written in stone? There's no takesies, backsies?
No take backs.
We will spend it as quickly as we can, Tim, to make sure.
But I didn't forget.
Okay. Oh, we don't.
A little bit.
Okay. So we can, we can add that to our, yeah, add that to our Zoom. We'll act as appropriate through our Zoom.
We'll add "act as appropriate" through our Zoom, yeah.
And just a question. So we are, we are funding?
These are all entitlement grants, too.
Sorry?
They're all entitlement grants, so I don't know if we can say no to it, can we?
No, I know. I was, I was thinking that. I'm like, do we have?
Right, do we have?
Because it's the
Gift. Yeah, I know. Did we vote on them before? I don't remember the voting on the grants.
Yeah, I mean, but these are entitlement grants, so.
They're going to give them to us regardless.
Right, exactly. We can't say no, so.
We don't typically vote on these. Like, it's like IDA issue.
One less thing for the end of August. Okay, so we, anyone who doesn't have any other questions? We will move on to 6.4, which is to recognize Hingham food service workers as HEA Unit E and X appropriate. Carrie, would you like to?
Yeah, great. Thanks, Jen. Just as background, the Hingham Food Services Association is the union that represents our food services technicians and managers and assistant managers. And they requested to be recognized as part of the Hingham Education Association, which is the union that represents most of the Hingham Public Schools employees. So based on the committee's discussions, we wanted to put forward a motion to recognize the union currently referred to as the Hingham Food Services Association as the bargaining unit E of the HEA.
Anyone on the committee have any questions? All right, and we take a motion? Do you want to make the motion, Carrie?
Okay, sure. I'll make a motion to recognize the union currently referred to as the Hingham Food Services Association as bargaining Unit E of the HEA.
Second, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Matt? Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Motion carries. Thank you very much for that explanation, Carrie. So we will move on next to 6.5, which is to discuss recommended price increases for food services à la carte items and act as appropriate.
Thank you. One of the things that we did at the end of last year was that we evaluated our prices on a lot of our food items that have been sold. And in, and as part of our evaluation, we look at the cost of those goods, those products. And we do kind of like a measure of how much it takes, how much time it takes people to lay it out, get it prepared, that sort of thing. And compared that to how much we charge for those items. As you're aware, in Massachusetts, lunch is free for our students for their first meal. But in particularly our middle and high school, the students have the option to also purchase other items outside of the lunch. And at the elementary school level, we may have students purchasing second lunches or second breakfasts. If that happens, that is not free. So the students would have to pay for that as well. We try to keep the main meal for the day at an affordable price. But it also means that for some of those other treats or cookies or other things like that, it may mean that we may have to charge a little bit more for those items to be able to cover the main meals that students have. So just wanted to give you, try to lay out the cost versus how much we're charging for those items. So in some cases, the bump might seem like a lot from one year to the next, but there's kind of a reason for that. And just ask that you approve those new prices, please. And we can have them in place for the start of school.
And just, this is the, this is part of the revolving account?
Yes.
Funds go into that account. Does anyone on the committee have any questions?
So we're still subsidizing those prices slightly?
Particularly in terms of the meals, yes. And we do get reimbursements from them from the state. So largely what comes in in terms of revenue for the, at least the first meal that's free, that is reimbursed to the state. And we do get some funding from the federal government as well, based on what we provide. And in prior years, just to give you a little bit of information, prior years, we had a grant that the food service department was able to apply for and it served as another subsidy for a lot of the food costs. We do not have that grant anymore. So everything that's purchased, we would have to make sure is covered.
Carrie, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, the money, so you said is going to the food services revolving account. That account supports the entire program, right? Like the, all the equipment, a lot of the things that need to make the program run. Is that correct?
As an example, as an example, the freezer at the high school, that has been giving us some trouble because of the age of it. So we've had to put in some major repair for that particular freezer. So all the, all of the capital and funding to run the program comes from that revolving account as well as, and if it is, for example, salaries or other expenses are not able to be covered by the revolving account, they would have to be covered by the operating account. So we try to make sure that we stay within that revolving to the costs and expenses and everything else.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Anybody else have questions? If not, I don't see anyone online with questions, I will make a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the recommended price increases for à la carte menus as outlined in the memo provided by Ayesha.
Thank you. More discussion? All right, roll call vote. All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Motion carries. We will move on to item 6.6, which is to discuss timeline for appointment of two community members and one school committee member to the 2025 School Building Committee. Ayesha?
Thank you. So in terms of town meeting at the end of, for 2025, there was one of our warrant articles to set up 2025 School Building Committee. And with that, the school committee will be responsible for three members of the building committee as recommended by the MSBA and as terms of past practice. We usually have one member of that committee also is usually a member of the school committee as well. And the school committee is also, in addition to that one person, the school committee also is responsible for voting two additional members of that committee. The town, the town moderator appoints two people and the select board appoints two people as well. So in all, we have about seven people on that committee. In addition to usually have an educator on there, a maintenance person or facilities person and a finance person on the committee. So that's the, in terms of entirety, how that, the composition of that committee. In terms of the timeline for that, we're hoping that as of today and in terms of your required, this information that is being provided at this meeting, the school committee meeting, it'll be the launching pad for providing advertising to the, to the, to the public in terms of putting in applications through the town's talent bank. And we will have, we'll keep the talent bank open or we will allow people to apply to the, through the talent bank until the 19th of September, at which time the subcommittee, the school committee's finance subcommittee will review the applicants that have submitted applications and determine and may conduct interviews, depending on the number of people who've applied. If we have several people and have to choose, then we will have to decide which ones will be most relevant or will be able to contribute. Well, everybody can contribute, but in terms of, in terms of the applicable skills that they may provide. And then we will inform the public of our decision in terms of selection of the committee by the 27th of October. And that will be just in time to have, hopefully we will soon after that find out that we have been awarded the grants by the MSBA. And if it is that we are not awarded those grants, I would hope that the committee would move forward in terms of next steps with or without the MSBA.
Thank you for putting this timeline together, Ayesha. For the one school committee member, if anyone in the committee is interested in serving on that, just send me an email and let me know.
That's good.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do, sorry. Just to clarify, so just the finance subcommittee is selecting people, not the full school committee?
Well, we can bring the
I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking to.
Right.
Typically, I think typically the whole committee has done it.
Okay.
But I'm good with it. Being a finance subcommittee, frankly, it gets a little awkward if the whole committee has to do it. But, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the past, we hadn't had a committee back in
The building committee.
Yes, exactly, since the last time. Exactly. So I figured not
Oh, Lord, was I, was I here then? Yes.
You're probably chair, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
And so is everyone okay with the finance subcommittee tackling that? And we can bring it forth to the whole committee to inform everyone.
Not to scare anyone, it's about a five to six-year commitment.
That's not scary.
No, that's not scary, right? And on average, the meetings are probably like once, once or twice a month, depending on the, how fast things have to be approved and how quickly things are moving. In terms of the time commitment.
Okay, Ayesha, no more questions? All right, we will move on to item 6.7, which is to receive a hiring update.
Yes, so again, very grateful to Marion Foley and her HR team for preparing this very thorough staffing update. So this time of year, I have a steady stream of finalists in my office. It's actually one of the most hopeful and optimistic parts of the year, welcoming new educators to the district. And want to also state that this staffing updated was prepared on Friday and since that date, we've had several additional candidates. So it's very much a moving target. And so wanted to highlight the district's new recruitment website off our page. It makes the application process incredibly easy and would encourage committee members and community members to share that site with family and friends who may be interested in joining our team. So thrilled that we've been able to fill a number of district-wide positions. I mentioned our new nurse manager. Of course, you've already met our new executive director of student services. We have a new payroll specialist, a new director of our integrated preschool that's been hired, our KAA preschool coordinator, a number of KAA teachers, assistant teachers. And then at each of the schools, principals have been hard at work on their own hires. We've had a number of new paraeducators onboard at each of the schools. We have onboarded some new speech-language pathologists, behavior technicians, school psychologists, team chairs, custodians, a number of short-term subs, adjustment counselor, a new world language teacher at the high school, a new technology and education teacher. So really, a lot of hiring has been done. We do still have a few roles to be filled. And as I mentioned, I did have in my office today some of the candidates who are finalists for these positions. But we are still narrowing in on a BCBA, behavior technician, speech and language pathologist. We still have a bit of hiring to do on paraeducators, although we are, I will say, in much better shape than we've been in past years at this time of year with regard to paraeducator hires, and we're grateful for that. I believe we are still looking for a freshman girls volleyball coach, if there's anyone out there with that skill set, and a JV boys golf coach as well. And again, one of the most challenging positions for us to fill are our short-term subs. So if anyone has the skill set to teach and maybe a retiree who might be interested in coming back to share their talents with us, we'd be most grateful. And we're perennially looking for bus drivers, van drivers and so on. And so again, hopefully, we can use this list and leverage the connections of people in the community to help us crest the finish line on the few hires we have left to go. Yeah, so Kids in Action, we would love for community members to share that opportunity. We also did have a really successful pilot last year where we had a few of our upper-class high school students serve as KAA teaching assistants last year, which was a really successful program. The Kids in Action students loved it and the high school assistants did as well. But it's a terrific way to get involved in the school community and would just encourage everyone to support us in spreading the word of some of these opportunities that we have remaining.
Thank you for that update. Anyone on the committee have any questions? All right, so we will move on to 6.9, which is to discuss policies. And I will pass that over to Ally Anderson, who is our Policy Subcommittee Chair.
Thank you, Jen. We are going to table 69B and 69C for tonight. We had some questions for legal counsel on those. They go along with actually approving the handbook, so they made sense to work on in conjunction with that. But we will report back at our next meeting. And so tonight, we just have 6.9A, which is KE, public complaints. We have a few very minor word changes to this. We were looking at it mostly to add in to the proper channel of complaint, to make sure that we have superintendent or assistant superintendent, because in most cases, these would go to Erica, apparently. And when we were looking at it, we also updated some of the language you'll see at the top. Just, we felt like we wanted to make it more of a statement than about any committee beliefs about any complaints, because it's really not our place to, to have those opinions necessarily. So we just updated that language to read a little bit better and reflect the committee's viewpoint on that. This is a first read, so happy to answer any questions, but we don't have to vote tonight.
I see it. Carrie has our, Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, we should check these against the collective bargaining agreements as far as complaints with staff. They specify it, and I think the assistant superintendent isn't included in a lot of them, too. So I can send you the passages from all of the agreements, but we should make sure it's consistent.
Yeah, that's a great point. If you send those along, we'll cross-reference them.
Yep, great.
Any other questions? All right, and as Ally said, this is just a first read, so we will go do our second read at our next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so move on to 6.10, which is to approve grants and donations. Ayesha?
Yeah, so we have one more entitlement grant, which is our Perkins Grant, which we received funding that's similar to levels of previous years. The purpose of this grant is to assist school districts in improving secondary-level programs in career and technical education and career-connected learning. We've been awarded $21,536. As we have done in the past, we will be using those to support our piloted pathways programs that have to do with career and technical education, such as our technology engineering pathway and our business pathway. And we are hoping to hire a part-time paraeducator to support the Traces program, because if we're going to have one teacher and 15 students over at that location working with power tools, it's nice to have a second adult.
Is there anyone in the committee that has, thank you, Erica, does there, anyone on the committee have any questions?
Part-time, is this 25 hours or 20 hours? Do we know, do we know the hours for this job?
I didn't do it weekly. It was from, and it was three and a half hours a day.
Okay.
I didn't do the math.
I can do the math. Three and a half hours a day is good.
You have an applicant?
If you have something in mind. This one is a little bit unusual in that somebody who is comfortable with power tools would obviously preferable for this position.
All right, thank you. So we will, nobody else has any questions? I will take a motion.
I don't think you have to
Entitlement grant, is it an entitlement grant?
Yes.
This is an entitlement grant.
Entitlement grant?
I think we're good.
General branch.
Yep.
I will move on to. Surplus?
Yes.
All right, Ayesha, surplus, go through them.
As Matt indicated in his presentation, he has been doing a lot of work on building 179. And we have lots of items listed for surplus. Excuse me, based on the work being done there. So this is just a request to declare these items as surplus items and to dispose them at the least cost to Hingham, please.
Questions? Motion, Michelle?
I will make a motion to declare as surplus the items listed in the memo dated August 5, 2025, which includes construction materials, pallets, indoor damaged and obsolete furniture fixtures and equipment, and to authorize the executive director of Business and Support Services to dispose of them at the least possible cost to the district and town of Hingham.
Give me a second. Second? All right, any more discussion? All right, roll call vote. All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion carries. All right. Just that one, Ayesha?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so. Item 7, subcommittee and project reports. Anyone? Tim?
Next Monday is the Human Rights Commission meeting. And just to, this could, one of the items on the agenda is the bystander, upstandard training, looking for ways for, to have a collaboration between the Human Rights Commission and Hingham Public Schools to sort of, the school piece and the public community piece of the upstandard training. So thank you again to Katie for all the work she's started finding organizations that can do those trainings. But that's something that we are digging into to try to have that be a successful collaboration.
Thank you. Matt, did you have anything?
I did not, no.
John, do you have anything? Ally?
Policy met last week, and we will get another meeting on the calendar to continue the discussion on the competency determination policies. And you can see a lot of work on the handbooks and we'll continue forward with some of those policies and any relevant policies that come out of that. Climate Action Committee met last week. They are looking to do a warrant article next year. The school committee member that is appointed right now is a non-voting member. They would like to make it a voting member just to, they're trying to build a rigor committee and make sure that people stay involved. So they thought that having more voting members would help just with people being available and such. So that is on their docket for next year. But it shouldn't really change anything on our end. We already have a member who's a liaison.
Thank you, Ally. Michelle? Carrie, do you have anything?
Yeah, salary negotiations met last Tuesday, and we started negotiations on a successor contract with the newly named Unit E of the HEA. So it's the food services technicians, managers, and assistant managers. And we have a few more meetings set up, both to talk amongst ourselves and then also to meet again with Unity. We're looking forward to continuing with that.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, and all I have is just there are warrants in the packet. All right, item 10, which is for, anything for 48 hours? We have nothing. I will note that our next school committee meeting, we're going to have a Saturday meeting, which is our annual school committee workshop, which is at 8:30 in the morning. The location is to be determined. We have two meetings in September. Following that, we have Monday, September 15, and then Monday, September 29. And then we'll also be scheduling a quick Zoom meeting potentially at the end of August. Courtney schedules with. All right, so moving on to item 9, which is to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. I have a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, the open session pursuant to chapter 30, oh, sorry. Chapter 30A, section 21A3, for the purpose of approving minutes of the executive session held on July 21, 2025, and to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, a public discussion of which would be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position, and act as appropriate if the chair so declares.
I surrender.
I second.
We will do roll call vote to adjourn to executive session. Carrie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.